Okay. Hi, everybody. Welcome to the Planning Commission meeting on Thursday, December 5th. First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Take a motion to approve. All right. Moved by Kate, seconded by Steve. All in favor? Or any discussion, I guess? No discussion? Okay. Good. So, all in favor? Aye? Got it? All right. The next item is approval of the minutes. Take a motion to approve the minutes from November 14th? All right. Moved by -- sorry, was that John or that was Steve? Okay. Moved by Stephen, seconded by Neil. Any discussion? I was gonna ask Stephen if he wanted to clarify something that was attributed to him, but that would be hard to do and it didn't -- it's not that it didn't make sense, so... All right. Well, all in favor of the meetings of the minutes for November 14th? Say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. Then, do we have any disclosures this evening relating to anything on tonight's agenda?
Nope.
Seeing none? Then we can jump right into opening the bubbly.
Good.
Breathe us some time here. Yeah, right on.
Would you mind passing those out?
Yep.
I'm Jeremy Metoski from Sheridaw Consulting Engineers. I'm here with John DeBoerl from Yod.
Thanks.
And we just wanted to take a couple of minutes of your time to talk about some issues that have come up when working through with the zoning staff that...
Could you guys...
Absolutely. Can I take this off in here?
Yeah.
Does that work? Is that okay? So, again, don't want to take too much time. We don't have a huge presentation here, but just wanted to bring your attention to an issue that -- so, John had asked me to look at some drainage issues and some -- a little backstory. Back in 2012, we got the project approved for an expansion to the south where John's family purchased the adjacent property and we expanded the parking lot. And that happened back in 2012. The rest of the -- at that time, no buildings were built, but the -- all the existing buildings as well as the land to the north that they own, all got incorporated into a PUD. So, mixed-use district. The AutoMaster at that time previously had been site plan developments over the years. Because of the rule about over two acres, projects have to be PUD. I believe that's why we fell into that. Plus, we felt that it would be better to look at lot coverage entirely as opposed to, you know, looking at them individually, north and south of Champlain Drive. So, the reason we're here tonight is the small, little drainage issue that John asked me to look at. There's an area behind the building that -- this building, I think, was built in '90s? '92, maybe? Somewhere around 1992, they built this originally for Land Rover, I think. And then it became BMW. And so, they do service and sales out of there for BMW. And I'm sorry, it's sales only. And then, behind the building, there's kind of a wraparound driveway. And he's always had this slope issue where that building was tucked into a slope and there's more water and then...
The area in Bratton and Lake are -- even though there's what was adequate drainage at the time, fills with water and doesn't drain quickly enough in the winter time before it freezes. And because that area...
Here, John.
Because that area, customers go out there and pick up their cars after they've been serviced. It's really, you know, it's not as safe as it could be. We can't have lights out there for obvious, well, zoning reasons. And so, it's limited to what they can see out there. So, I proposed trying to fix the drainage out there. And there's a couple of ways of doing it. Some of it being the rooftop, but also, I'd like to go underground there and fix some drains underground and put a wall in the grassy ridge that you see there that is concrete but drains through. It looks like stone. So, really, and it's like three feet tall. It's not like some big substantial thing. But that grassy knoll doesn't lend well to draining and it just drains down into that and then freezes. And so, Jeremy has looked at it for engineering-wise and what I thought would be kind of a simple thing, dig it up and make it better, but also meet some of the upcoming stormwater requirements, has turned into something because the setback is now 100 feet.
I believe so. We looked into that a little bit in the... The bylaw, so, PUDs and mixed districts have a variety of different setbacks related to the perimeter. So, when we did this project in 2012, there's, I believe, 30-foot setbacks to Champlain Drive. There's 50-foot setbacks to residential districts. And then, there's a different setback. So, depending on where you are within the entire perimeter, the setback changes everywhere. And regardless of that, because this building was originally built, you know, fairly close to this property line, at the time, it was probably a 20-foot setback that was allowed, no matter what, we're in the periphery buffer of the perimeter buffer for the project.
Which one of those lines is the property?
So, this is the -- the black one's the property line. And then, what's that? You want to move that over to the middle? Is that...
Yeah. We've got a better...
I can kind of show you guys up close here. So... Yeah, yeah. Back. So, anyway, the reason that we're talking about this is pretty much no matter what, we're going to be into construction in an existing setback. And the construction that John had proposed was essentially some drainage and a retaining wall roughly where this orange line is. And that wall would vary from, you know, 12 inches high to maybe three or four feet at the most. It's not a big wall. It's not a big slope. But it seemed to us that that was the good solution. So, we went into zoning, talked to them, and they said, "No, it's a structure under your regulations and you can't have any structures in the setback." And it occurred to me that that was kind of an interesting interpretation, especially because you've got two adjacent commercial uses.
It's not a matter of being an interpretation. The buffer doesn't allow structures in it.
Okay. Interesting that that was the way that the regulations were written. And so, from my perspective, as a common sense kind of approach, retaining walls are good for things like separating between two properties where you have a grade change or you have a slope that you have to deal with.
Preventing erosion.
And can help, in this case, prevent erosion and help address some stormwater issues. So, it got me thinking about, you know, if...
This is the view from...
Yeah, exactly. That big grass slope that works its way up to the shoe store is right here. And then, it's wooded in the -- a little bit in the corner. And then, Champlain Drive's here and Mini is up at the top of the page. So, the -- I guess the reason we're here is to just ask if you're going to be looking at the regulations in the near future in terms of changes, maybe looking at this flexibility in setbacks, especially as they relate to existing commercial properties adjacent to each other. I don't think the shoe store cares if we build a wall. And then, you know, in terms of it just making sense, again, if you've got a site like this where you've got a grade change between two properties, oftentimes, a retaining wall is a good solution.
They own all of that?
What's that?
Shoe store?
Or whoever owns that building?
Yeah, they own...
Okay. And if the shoe store was going to build up against John's property, I imagine they'd want to build a retaining wall too so that they could maximize their property.
I imagine they already don't know that they can't build...
They'll find out that their property is less valuable.
Right. So, I guess the point to my -- all the years that I've worked on PUDs and subdivisions, you know, I understand that perimeter buffers are appropriate for, say, you know, keeping wooded buffer between a residential project and a commercial project or, you know, two different not compatible uses. But I think in this case, you've got two compatible uses and you've just got a regulation that doesn't allow it to necessarily do what makes sense. And that's why we're here. So, looking at that, and then the larger conversation we had is John has been on the stormwater committee for the town. And I've been with meetings with Tom and we're here to listen into what Tom's got to say. But we know that AutoMaster is one of the few sites that's greater than three acres of impervious surface. So, thinking ahead and trying to plan John's expenses in the future, we know that we could be back in here trying to get a stormwater facility approved in the setback two years from now. And so, as you're thinking about how does the regulations coming in from the state affect what we need to do for these retrofits for these existing commercial properties, the setbacks are going to be where there's available land to do the treatment that we need to do. Because those existing buildings were often built right up to those setbacks. So, I think it would be important to kind of take that into consideration as you're thinking about the next version of the bylaw and what could be done to have appropriate mechanisms placed to allow stormwater. And certainly, sometimes you need retaining walls related to a stormwater project. You know, look at the ponds at Maple Tree Place are all retaining wall-based. So, the state wants us to maximize the amount of treatment. The way you maximize things is vertical walls. That's how you get the maximum volume. So, I think it's appropriate to kind of give this some consideration. We may try to work with Dean to see if there's an interpretation that works. I noticed, for example, one section of the bylaws says walls are not allowed because they're structures. And another section of the bylaws says they are if they're 24 inches or less. So, that seemed like an arbitrary number to me. You know, if this -- if that -- if the number was 48, we could've got this project approved and not been here.
So, actually, there is a little distinction. And some of you who've been around when the Burris matter was being litigated, that was a case that the town was involved in last year where a resident wanted a fence and a buffer. And the matter went to environmental court. The stuff that Jeremy's referring to is the same kind of things that Mr. Burris referred to as part of his argument that it's why he felt he should be able to have a fence in the buffer. The ruling from the court was that they're misreading the bylaw. The buffer basically is supreme. So, if you want to allow structures in the buffer, that's the section of the regs that you need to modify. The commission has had some discussions about the periphery buffer issue in the past. It's just that it kind of got glommed up with some other potential PUD changes. So, the stuff that, if you want to address it, would be through the buffer change.
And I guess I would just ask, I didn't think of that, but there's a chain-link fence on the Mini. So, that was a pre-existing fence.
Structures that were there before...
Now, there wouldn't be a fence allowed. I mean, that just doesn't make any sense to me. If we came in for that project today as written, we wouldn't have been able to put a fence between the -- what is it? A motel or something? Between the motel and the parking lot for our cars, we wouldn't have been able to build a fence. Other than building it 50 feet from the property line, just seems kind of ludicrous to me.
Jeremy's comment is bringing into focus the fact that regs do change over time and what were the preferences of one generation of planning commissioners are not the same. People need to understand that not that many years ago, Shelburne zoning regulations did not allow car dealerships as a new commercial use in the district. The only ones that were allowed were the ones that existed as of a certain date. There was an opinion from the town attorney regarding that issue. So, anyway, generations of planning commissioners change because at that time, at least, the feeling was people didn't want Shelburne to turn into another South Burlington.
Yeah. No, I can appreciate that zoning bylaws evolve over time. And I think that's a great thing that you guys do. But I'm just pointing out real-world consequences of those decisions that were made by prior board, how they affect real-world businesses in today that are just trying to solve problems.
We could do it totally underground. And this is an effect because there's no structure, but we could do a better job by doing it the way we drove it up. And so, that's kind of why we're here, because it didn't seem like such a big deal. But all of a sudden, it's a big deal because it's in this newfound area. And... I'm finding a lot of times that these things have become way more complex than they need to be. I mean, just getting permits for certain things. We've had to get things reversed because we were told it was $8,000, $9,000 for a permit this last time and it got changed to $75 because of the way it was written before. And I've been doing this for 30 and 40 years in this town, like Dean said, with various different commissions. And we're going so far forward in so many directions, but this seems to be an area where we're not going as far forward as we should be. And that's why we're here. I mean, it doesn't make a lot of difference to me, but it could be easily remedied fix in my area and all of a sudden, it seems to be complex where it doesn't need to be.
And the only other point I would make about the landscaping comment was in the landscaping section under PUD, landscaping sort of required in the perimeter buffer. And I'm sure Kate would agree that, you know, it's not unusual to have landscaping walls associated with landscaping. So, you know, if this were a stone, you know, dry-laid wall and it was gorgeous, you know, it could be an enhancement to the buffer as opposed to -- which is actually what I had showed John what I wanted to do.
That type of wall.
What's that?
That type of wall.
Yeah. Dry-laid, stone, beautiful landscape wall.
You're making a product, dude.
Yeah. This is a precast product, but it looks like dry-laid stone.
I have a couple of questions. So, is it -- if this were all underground, this would be allowed? You'd be allowed to do something in the setback? Is that...
I don't know that. I guess I'm asking that...
Which Dean and I had a conversation that that may actually be.
And bring up all the pavement and put all the plumps, you know, or all the rooftop drainage into this, right? And put it underground.
Because utilities are allowed in setbacks. And, you know, oftentimes, like in -- you can have things like a septic system can go in a setback, you know? So, there's more flexibility about that. The other thing is, I'm assuming this is a PUD under the old regulations that you're going by, not under the Form Based Code, right?
Correct. 2012 regulation.
Okay. All right. So, you know, one of the things that we've been trying to do is to have a little bit more flexibility about which regulations people can use because they offer advantages.
More appropriate, yeah.
Yeah. And we've made some progress with that, but I don't know that we're quite far along yet to -- so that you could, if you were governed by a PUD under the old regulations, if somehow you could jump into changing it to the new regulations.
Yeah. I would be just initially worried about all the other impacts on things like the buildings and how the architecture is treated.
Right.
There's a lot of elements in the Form Based Code that might not be applicable to the existing buildings.
Yeah. But so, you know, it would be one of these things where you would -- there'd be some advantages, but there'd also be some disadvantages. So, anyway, I was just, you know, it's -- we have this kind of bifurcated thing going on right now, which is challenging.
Yeah, I understand that.
So...
And again, we might just be looking at what type of landscaping is allowed in the setback buffer because, again, the landscaping component of it might be independent of the drainage component of it. But I do believe that there does need to be a little bit more thought in how, especially as it relates to existing facilities, that need to be retrofitted.
Right. Well, you know, one of the reasons I raise the Form Based Code is because, you know, one of the points of that is to use the land that we have more efficiently, you know? So, we're not just sprawling all over the place, you know? So, that was a big part of that. So, it's a little ironic that, you know, on the one hand, that would be something very much encouraged because there's just a big sort of nothing between you and, right? You know, just something that has to be mowed. And yet, you know, so, it's a challenge. I'm not sure how we would thread that needle yet, just off the top of my head, but it's...
And that's why we're here.
I very much hear you and appreciate how you have framed the problem.
We saw an example of that, if I should see it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
It's not a huge deal, but it's an example of that might hinder everybody, including
myself, again, down the road if we don't put that a little bit...
Sure, yeah.
The question is, can you change the percentage of the...
Development or the land to Form Based zoning or all of it? Is it all or nothing or is it...
Right now, it's kind of an all or nothing.
Yeah. That's what I thought as well. You can't, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So, we don't, you know, yeah, we've made some incremental progress towards clarifying previously developed sites and how that can be -- the Form Based Code can apply to them a little bit more flexibility, just in this latest round of the updates. But the PUD thing is something that is -- so far, we haven't really engaged with that. But it's a shortcoming. I admit it's a shortcoming.
And this does show an example of a case that was not the intention behind the walls and buffers and that sort of thing. And I'm -- we have some options. I'm assuming that when we get into discussion, we could consider retaining walls relating to stormwater or something like that that would be okay.
And/or landscaping. If you look at -- if you want a specific section to look at, I mean, it's definitely 2110.86 landscaping.
Improvement of a lot. Partial retractable grass and shrubs. Landscaping may be included.
Flower beds, pedestrian walks, retaining walls under 24 inches in height, statues and other smaller ornamental objects. So, and again, if that was reworded to say something that -- because I think landscaping's actually required -- landscaping 1980.6 may be placed within yard setbacks. But then, when you look at the definition of structure, it says, you know, "Structure includes walls and fences and structures aren't allowed in the setback." So, it's just one of those points of clarification, I think, that from a design standpoint, might want to just be looked at.
Speaking stormwater-wise too, isn't it important that down the road, when everybody's going to have to address the stormwater things in setbacks, that little structures might be required to meet the requirements of stormwater, that we have this clarification ready?
And that's specific to retrofits too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. That's what we really wanted to talk to you guys about. I'm sure you guys can have a discussion about how the best way to achieve it.
Structure, right, please.
And we can't fix it till spring, anyway.
I just have a question on the practicality of it, just...
Right now, if I might, instead, the water collects there and freezes, right? Correct.
Yeah, the water...
Collects here and freezes?
It starts about here, as you can see. That's probably three feet high. And this, as you can see, erodes because it just seeps through the bank from all of this up above. So, Jeremy's wall would, you know, start low here and kind of work into the corner here and work here and control all the drainage down into this, put some plumbing underneath it to move it and then move it out.
I found this product called VertaBlock.
So, because what would prevent the water just building behind the wall?
Yeah. So, that's what I was going to say. So, we actually found this product called VertaBlock. And it's a hollow cord precast product that basically allows the front to look like dry-laid stone and the back to act like a perimeter drain. So, in one two-foot block, the water drops straight vertical through the block. They're hollow. And then, you pick it up with an underdrain underneath and pipe it out, which is a really slick solution to two problems, which is what I had proposed. And when we met with Ravi, ran into some issues with whether it would meet the zoning.
To give you guys an insight into what happens for us, where that water collects right now, below zero nights, the cars that are sitting there freeze and spot. And we can't move them the next day without working on that. Customers come to pick up their car after hours on a zero night and their car won't go. So, we have to...
Are you wanting me to use the other mic?
That's a feature.
That's a feature.
Any other questions? I don't want to take too much of your time.
Jeremy, in particular, for the next topic about stormwater, for the other folks, but just sort of defining stormwater structures. I mean, you've sort of referenced, oh, boy, there's some other types of stormwater structures other than this wall. And I'm kind of new to the commission. There's some others of us that are kind of new too. And just sort of understanding what stormwater structures are as we consider this stuff down the road. I don't know if that's good for here or for next conversation or for...
Yeah, I'd be happy to work with you guys and give you some examples. We did a retrofit project in Williston recently for a subdivision. And it required, you know, very large tanks. Those tanks were placed in what was essentially the perimeter buffer of the project because it was an old '80s subdivision that had a 50-foot buffer. And the only place we could pick up the water and treat it was in that buffer. So, those tanks were, you know, 5,000-gallon tanks that stuck up above grade in order to receive and treat the stormwater before it went into a pond. And that pond, you know, is again, in the buffer. There were fences. There's fences required. Here's an interesting one. There's a fence required by law so that people don't drown in the pond and it's in the buffer. So, I really would have a problem just from a design standpoint, trying to achieve a pond that we had to retrofit on the AutoMaster property under the regulations as they're written.
Could you give a citation on the law that requires fences around the pond?
Yeah.
You're talking about stormwater regulations?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. If you have a certain depth of pool and all of that and...
But that's not an municipal requirement?
No. No. It's a stormwater -- part of the Vermont Stormwater Management Manual. Tom can probably cite a book and page on South Burlington requires fences around ponds?
Only if the state has.
Yeah. So, and then, of course, then you have a homeowners association that wants it so that the kids don't go in there from a liabilities perspective because they own the pond. And I'm sure John would do the same thing if he had one that had a deep pool. So, anyway, it's just stuff to think about when you're a designer and you're looking at regulations. It's oftentimes these types of things that maybe get missed in developing the reg. So, thank you very much for your time.
Yeah, thanks for making this up.
Really appreciate your perspective.
I'm going to stick around for Tom's presentation.
Right on. And we should preface this conversation with no disrespect to South Burlington. Whatever previous commissioners might have said. All right. All right. So, we're going to move on to the stormwater topic. Did you have a particular introduction?
Yeah. I guess I can just mention that it was -- Jeremy said something about Tom's presentation. There really is no presentation. You've received material. It's really more of a conversation, is at least that's how I had understood it. And Tom's joined by Chris Robinson, the Shelburne stormwater guru, czar, however you want to call it. The staff report summarized the issues that had been brought before the commission a few different times in the past six months. This information has been shared with Tom and with Chris. And Tom has given some initial thoughts, but really, I thought of it as more of a conversation. And we highlighted some issues that could be discussed. And I think it could be started off with whatever question that commissioners wanted to pose to these guys. And just to make it a little bit clearer, Chris is the head of stormwater efforts as they are done here in Shelburne. He's a one-man do-it-all show. And he gets assistance from the folks in South Burlington. The town of Shelburne has a contract with the city of South Burlington, which does things like reviews projects for the DRB and provides other technical assistance.
Amazing.
Sorry. From a packet perspective, before we get into that, since there was the Article V material in here, would we have this conversation and then we could -- we've talked about this Was that the idea?
It would... There... No. It wasn't intended that you would hold up whatever conversations you have in order to discuss Article V unless there was something about Article V that you would want to get Tom's input on and for -- to demystify it. The idea of Article V is Shelburne's zoning regulations right now have this overlay district which was created several years ago in response to permitting requirements that doesn't do -- it doesn't do a lot other than to just check that developers who are doing projects within this portion of the town and this kind of weird boundary establishes that they either don't need a state permit or if they do need a state permit, they show the DRB that permit or evidence that they're getting that permit. There's been some discussion in the past about leveling the playing field between Form Based zoning and the conventional zoning so that people wouldn't look at the Form Based zoning and go, "Oh, that's got stricter stormwater requirements." Instead, I'm going to do conventional. And the idea would be to bring the requirements that you find in Form Based into the regular regs, at least for a portion of the town, so that regardless of which type of zoning you took, chose to use, you would meet the same stormwater requirements. So, that's kind of a wrapper around this idea of you've got Form Based zoning, it has stricter stormwater requirements than your conventional zoning. They were very much modeled after what had been developed initially in South Burlington. You've made some -- you've had people like Don suggest that the jurisdiction of that requirement be expanded so that you get more things, a 3,000-square-foot... Yeah. What was your -- what's your proposal, Don? It's basically half of what the current requirements are, I think.
It was to go from a half acre to a quarter acre.
Half to a quarter. And then, from 5,000-square-foot change to a 3,000-square-foot change, I think. In any event, the idea is you have a couple of things in play. One is, would you want to make form based zoning stormwater requirements stricter or change them in some way and you can benefit from Tom's input because South Burlington has been there? And a related question is, would you want to bring the form based zoning stormwater requirements into the default regs? How would you do that? One way to do that is through this Article Five.
Yeah, and thanks for that. I suppose with all of these conversations and thanks for, to both of you for being here. Main question, the thing that keeps coming up for me anyway, is recognizing the, the costs that we have to deal with stormwater issues and seeing that number not getting smaller in the future. It, it seems wise to incorporate that into new development, retrofits, those sorts of things. And that's where the question, and we've got a copy of the email in the packet, where you provided some rough cost estimates for various projects to give us an idea of that. And it's more just the general idea of how, any recommendations that you have or thoughts around mitigating those problems before having to deal with the balloon payments later and dealing with it. I, I think that's really, at least from my perspective, where we've kind of struggled a little bit. Because I know, as Dean mentioned, the, what, what Dawn was, was promoting to go from a half acre to a quarter acre. Obviously, that would create more infrastructure and, and having stormwater dealt with more often than not or in more cases. But obviously, that increases project costs. We don't want to drive people away from form based zoning because at least at this time, our, our current regs would be more lax in that department. So it's more just finding that balance and understanding what works best, recognizing everything that's involved.
And maybe putting an add-on to that, you know, we just had John DeBrul come in talking about his recent project that added, added parking area for vehicles. He's a business owner who would be affected if there were stricter requirements having to do with stormwater. And so there is that dynamic there. What, what impacts are you going to impose on business community or other developers who are going to be generating, who are going to be saying, you know, my business has been here 30 years and you're killing me with fees and fines and all that kind of stuff?
I guess I wanted to touch on that point. I think these guys have mentioned that the state of Vermont is also, of course, a player here as well, right? And they've just put out a draft 3-9050 permit. It's also going to have new requirements for parcels with large amounts of impervious, similar to the one we just talked about. So that's changing, the public comment was due on that, I think it was Monday? Yeah, it was Monday, this week. Still, so they're going to finalize those in the next month or two, probably. And those are additional costs that'll be out there for some of the larger properties.
Yeah. And with that concern, unless I'm missing something, this, the, yes, I understand that it would affect current business owners as well, but with the space that we were talking about, half acre to quarter acre, it would impact those projects if they're looking at doing retrofits. Or let's say a current business is looking at, if we were to go down to quarter acre and they were at a third of an acre, they would be impacted over the half acre requirement that we're going with. So yes, in that, in that regard, it would increase an impact. But I just want, I don't want it to sound like it's a, it's an anti-business thing. It's more of a pro taxpayers are going to have to shoulder the cost at some point if we're not managing these things properly. And I just want to make sure that we're addressing it where we can and doing it in a way that makes sense without stepping on all the toes.
Do you know, one of the things that I'm just thinking about is, again, just to think of John DeBrul's situation. Because I think the three acre is going to apply to him probably. So if, if we could figure out a way to kind of come up with some sort of hybrid PUD or something between the, the conventional that he's working with now, which is very restrictive because it's, it's old school, you know, use as much land as possible, do, you know, just sprawl everywhere and very suburban. If, how could that be transitioned to something that would be, he would be allowed to take advantage of more of the form based code characteristics? So he could do more things on his lot and have ultimately a more compact, highly engineered, you know, site and building design that would also in the end be more, you know, more resilient from a stormwater standpoint. I mean, it's possible to have all of these things, but we have to allow it to happen. So I just want to, you know, incentivize. I could see, I could see the, the requirement to, that the state has to do that, that they're getting more restrictive. If that could be incentive to use the form based code because you're going to get more density than you're allowed under the existing code. And that could sort of offset some of the, the disadvantages and costs for a property owner.
And what you're talking about is finding a way to have a path for somebody who's under a standard zoning PUD to be able to leverage.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. The greenest possible thing you can do is to reuse an existing site and not go and, you know, build on a, a greenfield someplace. And so, and we have a lot of existing sites that are just completely paved with, you know, excessive amounts of pay, parking space and big roofs and then the building sitting empty. And we can all think of some examples of what those places are. And if we can incentivize their renewal, I mean, I'm just, I'm thinking from a business standpoint, you know, this, this, there should be some way to leverage this.
But the proposed amendments that this elector will be considering in February, that existing developed or redeveloped section, that does exactly what you're saying. It allows someone to take each use, each building on the site and it gets, gives it a minimal land area and it's considered the non-deforming space. And then it frees up all of the area for additional development. Now, in the case of DeBrul's of Auto Master, they're not likely to be growing buildings on all of that space because they're using that space to park cars. But, you know, three or four generations from now, maybe when instead of driving cars, we're flying cars and we don't need that space, the form based zoning would allow that conversion to take place. So I mean, in a sense, there's already an incentive in the changes that are going to be considered in February for someone like the Auto Master to get out of the PUD, convert it to form based zoning. And then it's just that they wouldn't be really reaping much immediate benefit from it because most people who'd want to do that conversion are planning some additional development. The more buildings they have with more cars they have, the more physical space I assume they're going to need to park more cars. And there's an, there's not an unlimited amount of space there. But if they were looking at developing, doing infill development, that's what the form based zoning would do.
Right. Well, I mean, maybe a structure or something like that, there's, there's possibilities that might, might, might work. But anyway, I'm just thinking, instead of thinking in terms of, of this, you know, punitively on, you know, these people have got to clean up their, their act, you know, sort of, we could, you know, this is a commercial area that we really want to redevelop for all sorts of reasons. Maybe we can kind of think in terms of how we, this can be a win-win for everybody. I'm just throwing that out there.
Yeah. And actually, just, just for clarity, I, yeah, wasn't looking at it as a punitive thing. It's more just as a, finding a balance to, for what works. And maybe, maybe what that is, is on an extreme case, coming up with some kind of subsidy thing to encourage that. Or to offset costs or something. It's not meant as a us, them or anything else or to create polarization. It's just recognizing that we do have this stormwater liability that is, is happening. And I know.
Well, we want to clean it, we want to, we want to reduce that and grow our grand list at the same time.
Right.
So, yeah. So that's, that's what I'm just trying to think, like, how do we, you know, frame this as, in as positive a way for, for business as, as possible?
And the stormwater regulations are only for new or redeveloped, you know, projects? Or are they also for, I mean, can you go to somebody who's not in compliance now and, or there's no law that, no, so?
That, that's what the new rule is going to do for people that have over three acres of impervious.
Over three.
This is the first time they're reaching backwards and saying, okay, if you've got three acres or more already, now you've got to retrofit. Otherwise, it's when you make a change or addition to your lot, that's what would trigger it.
That includes subdivisions. So even though individual homes are a half acre, quarter. Yeah, sorry. No problem, sorry. Again, Jeremy Matusky, this time I'm just here as Jeremy Matusky.
I live at 68 Summerfield Road in Shelburne, so I'm a taxpayer here in town. And, you know, rural developments, suburban developments are common plans that were permitted together. Mr. DeBrul's house is in Deer Run. They're part of a stormwater permit that will be subject to the 9050 rules. So we're going to be looking at subdivisions that were designed in the 80s and coming back here trying to figure out how to squeeze new gravel wetlands and bio retention facilities into the space between those homes. And so all these issues are going to be necessary associated with the 9050 permit. So I encourage you guys to read the fact sheets on that. And Tom's here, he's studied it, I've looked at it. Could try to answer some questions about how much impact that has on regular, ordinary citizens of Shelburne that don't know that they're going to be subject to all these requirements.
I want to ask, can you just opine on the difference between South Burlington's regulations and Shelburne's regulations? And to the extent that they're, I know in your email, you said they're not necessarily stricter. But to the extent that they're stricter than the state regulations perhaps? Just how do you manage property owner angst about that?
The biggest difference is specificity. When an engineer comes in with a project, we have some specific standards they meet, which are based on state standards. And it's more, much more black and white than some of the other language that you might see in other regulations where somebody has to consider and manage stormwater. You know, I don't know exactly what the phrasing is, but it's hard to enforce that and tell them to do X, Y, or Z when the language is vague. But if you say you have to control, you know, the one year storm and detain it for 24 hours using this type of modeling, you know, then we're pretty specific and we can talk about, okay, that's the standard, how are you going to do it then? And we reference the state requirements, the Vermont Stormwater Management Manual, which was just rewritten in 2017 for the different treatment practices that are in there. And as far as, I think it was an email I wrote a month or so ago about, you know, not being stricter than the state. So the state threshold for new projects or expansions is one acre. Ours has been half an acre for a little while and I couldn't tell you exactly when we changed that, at least five, maybe more years ago. And we did that for a reason, we can get to in a second. But, so in that sense, it's stricter because it's a lower threshold. But once you're above the threshold, you're doing the same kind of treatment standards, right? Using the same practices.
But it's more inclusive because you go down to a half acre.
And so I will say also the 3-9050 permit lowers the state standard to half an acre in 2022.
Yep.
So they're going to be at half an acre. So we found ourselves in South Burlington, sort of ahead of the state in a lot of different ways. You know, with that, it's just one example with the way we were having folks prioritize.
Property owners thanking you for your foresightness or is that?
They're thanking us for our foresight. I think we established a pretty obvious need in South Burlington with our five stormwater impaired watersheds. You know, all the costs, all the projects in our plans, the lake phosphorus TMDL. So I think people don't necessarily love having to do more, right? Because treating stormwater may not be what makes somebody money, right, in their, their business. But I think people understand why and have worked through it and found strategies and ways to do it.
Maybe you could just spend a second and explain impaired watersheds and compare your five to our one.
Yeah. So years ago, the state of Vermont went and did some sampling in the streams, looking at the fish and bug populations and determined that a certain number of streams and mostly in Chittenden County area, but around some ski resorts, didn't support the, the proper population and diversity. Declared those streams impaired, determined the reason they were impaired was because of unmanaged stormwater runoff. So then, there's also another permit that the towns are subject, you call this MS4 permit. So they've written into the MS4 permit that we have to develop flow restoration plans for every stormwater impaired watersheds. So we have five of those in South Burlington. Shelburne has one for Monroe Brook. And within there, basically, there's a flow reduction target in the stream during a one-year storm. So you're just trying to reduce flows in the stream to reduce stream bank erosion. If you're reducing the flows through stormwater treatment practices, you're also going to reduce sort of the wash off type pollution as well, right? Anything that's on the big parking lot that washes off. So Shelburne put that plan together, I think there's 18 projects, Chris, in the Monroe Brook plan to be implemented. It was over a 20-year period. We're into that 20-year period now. I think, oh, 15, 16 years remaining for implementation, so.
But basically, they're hammers that are putting pressure on municipalities because they themselves are, are subject to permits. In order to comply with those permits, they have to make these changes so that the streams recover.
That's right. Yeah. And then, so in the most recent MS4 permit reissuance, there's a phosphorus control plan because of the lake phosphorus TMDL. So now all the towns are given an allocation. You're looking at all your town owned roads and properties like this property. And you're giving a, you know, a phosphorus reduction target you have to achieve. And the way that they're handling that or trying to achieve that on private property is through some of these things in the 9050 permit, like the three acre rule.
Just to elaborate on that a little bit also, is we have Monroe Brook right now that is considered impaired. But we also have a couple other bodies of water, one being McCabe's Brook, which is on the 303D list as being impaired. But it hasn't been officially established as something requiring a TMDL. So, but that could be on the verge of that. And that's one of the things that the town would really try to avoid from happening because then it's going to push into flow restoration plans, phosphorus, all that other stuff that comes along with it. So anything we can do to potentially protect that area, the same as we would Monroe Brook, would be beneficial. The other body of water that's listed also is Shelburne Pond as, as being impaired. So it's, it's one of those things that, you know, we just, we, we have to have on our, on the forefront that we don't want that to get to a point where they have to establish a TMDL for it because it's just going to push tighter and stricter regulations and more projects and money and everything else, so.
You know, as we, is there, is there a way to, to show us and the public the location of the watersheds for these brooks now? So that I, I'm realizing I don't entirely know where the lay of the land. I mean, I, I, I do, I think for, for Monroe, but I really am not clear on it for McCabe's or Shelburne Pond.
If Dean doesn't already have it, I'm pretty sure the state.
I wonder if I can pull it up on the screen in just a second, but we've shared maps of the Monroe Brook and, yeah.
Yeah.
It's probably.
That's common. So we used to have overlay districts, right? And then we increased those overlay districts at one point to just cover the stormwater impaired watersheds. But the general public property owner doesn't know where that line falls and sometimes it goes through a middle. And so it would be difficult sometimes, somebody would come in and say, wait, because I'm 100 feet this way, I've got to do stormwater. But if I was trying over here on the other side of this line, you know, basically where the top of the hill is, right? Because water goes that way, I wouldn't have to do it. So over time, we've just done away with overlay districts in South Burlington. I mean, their entirety for stormwater because it wasn't a whole lot of the city that was outside of it anyway. It was like 40%. And then with the lake phosphorus TMDL, it was just more consistent and simpler just to have that half acre standard citywide.
Yeah, right across the board.
Yeah. Because, I mean, we're trying to, you know, we're grappling with. Our growth areas, you know, like, like our growth, we realized our growth areas have, you know, riparian areas right smack in the middle of them, you know, I mean, that's a problem. So, so what do we do? You know, we can, we're talking about maybe kind of configuring the development a little better so that creating bigger buffers, you know, trying to prioritize more compact footprints of the overall development and enabling people to get, walk around more easily, that kind of thing. But it's, you know, it's, yeah, maybe we should be thinking about half acre, you know, I don't know. It's, it's kind of, it seems sort of piecemeal, but this is very helpful to understand.
Well, it's one of the things, I mean, if it's looking at 2022, is that when it said it was coming? 2022 is going to be a state regulation anyhow. Is this something that you want to have to go back in a couple more years and revise again? Or do you just want to make the changes now while you're doing the revision, knowing that that's coming anyhow?
So Chris, are you saying that the sort of overlay approach, which sounds a kind of cumbersome and maybe, you know, hard to use and hard for people to understand, is maybe something that is being, it's not really best practices anymore? That the new way is really going to be more half acre across the board?
Across the board, right across the entire town.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it'd be easier to manage that way too.
Yeah.
And so I always, if I can jump in, look at, okay, what do we need done, you know, from the South, what do we need done that the state requirements aren't forcing people to do already, right? And that was, we, we felt that we needed that half acre because there was so much work to be done out there. And if we're focusing on one acre and above, we're going to miss a lot of sites. And if you're three quarters of an acre, you know, you're still having a pretty big impact or potentially. So we, we dropped it to there. But you got to be careful because, oh, well, okay, lower, let's say a tenth of an acre. The amount of tech. But, you gotta be careful because, oh, well, okay, lower, let's say a tenth of an acre, the amount of technical stormwater review that would have to recur. I don't know how many projects Chris refuses at the moment, but that would significantly increase, right? So, there's, achieving the right balance, and there's a point of diminishing returns where, you know, oh, I wanted to add two parking spots. And it's gonna take all the staff time, all this extra effort and modeling and engineering cost. So, you gotta find the right balance. And I can't tell you exactly what that is. I've been happy with the half acre for now. And that's what they're proposing to go to. Yeah. Because, yeah, I certainly wouldn't wanna start, it's part of my job to review things that are like 2,000 square foot increase on a lot. That's the point of diminishing return there, I think, in some respects for, for staff time.
So, I guess from the devil's advocate, from the devil's advocate position, I'd, I'd ask if the state's gonna increase their requirements in 2022. What, why should, why should a community go to the trouble of raising our local standards now to that just two years away? Do you know what I mean? I mean, I mean, is that, why?
Well, it depends if you feel that you need it more in some way, right? I will say that we look at everything above half an acre or an acre, right? That's the state standard.
Yeah.
And we'll have comments on things submitted that maybe the state wouldn't still during our technical review. Because it's just a size of geography thing, right? We might have a couple of projects to look at in South Burlington. We look at them real close and make sure that fits. And we kind of have a say sometimes in how they might do things. Or, we might find opportunities for collaboration with them. So, if this town or city has a road that has no treatment, we might try to work with the property owner to kind of help meet our requirements. We could say, hey, what if you make this a little bigger, we pitch in some costs. I guess it kind of gives you an ending that conversation in some ways.
That's helpful, thank you.
And I don't, I don't have the subject in town, but the church work that's happening with the, the stormwater along the road. I sat on, in, sat in on a DRB meeting where that was being debated back and forth. And it, it seems to me that that would be one of those cases where if it's a budding, a, a town road that has its own stormwater stuff, that there could be an opportunity for collaboration instead of this project's gonna do this? And then, the town will just have to integrate with it later or deal with the aftermath?
Yeah, I mean, it, it does, it does allow for that. Once we have this, our phosphorus control plan completed and we have a better picture of exactly what we're gonna have for projects moving forward, I think that's where we, we'll see a lot of those opportunities for collaboration. Right now, I think there's, out of the 18 projects we have on our flow restoration plan, I think there's two, maybe three of them that are actually on town property. The rest are on private property. So, it's, it's gonna be a lot of public-private partnership type stuff to try to get things done. And some cost sharing on some aspects of it, because some of it does take on town roads. So, there's, it's, it's gonna be a, a lot of work moving forward.
I guess, I don't know that particular project well, but some of the reason you wanna have your regs too is because the state will look at the site that's being developed. And it may not look at the downstream infrastructure. So, there's plenty of neighborhoods in South Burlington where there's a 12-inch pipe that was put in 40 years ago. Now, there's a development up here, and they wanna send water through, through that pipe or, you know, a really small culvert. And we say, well, hold on, we're, we're gonna cause a major problem here. So, I think that's some of the language in Shelburne's regs already. But, I just know in that case where it was, I think, the project was connecting to town infrastructure. But, no one had looked at kind of what was downstream or planning for upstream development. If you know the field behind it's gonna get built out, you don't wanna let them put in smaller pipes because they'll be immediately undersized if someone's gonna discharge their water that way in the future.
Along this line, something that I've been thinking about, and I'm not a stormwater expert in sort of how the infrastructure works, but of how we can think ahead. I mean, talking about the development that's going to have to change things as regs change. And I get that the state regs are going up, but I could see it being totally possible that they'll get stricter and stricter over time. And the way weather's changing, stormwater is going to become a bigger and bigger issue. So, I guess, are there ways, have you guys been thinking in South Burlington about how to plan ahead? Like, are there any ways to put in that flexibility, say, these are our regs now, but we can assume that in the next 10 years, we're probably gonna get stricter and stricter? And is there a way that we can build that in to make it easier for people to adapt or encourage stronger?
It's important for folks that come in regularly, you know, because you get some of the same engineers that'll come in probably to the DRB, to get them to understand you're looking at stormwater, number one, and it's a serious issue, and you're gonna address it, and here's the black and white regs, right? From a climate change perspective, though, having minimum pipe sizes, really looking at the downstream infrastructure, and, you know, having the language in your regulations to say, you know, this is gonna be undersized. One of the things I wanna update in our regs is in the old manual, there were specific storms and there were a specific amount of rainfalls. Now, the state uses some other data for precipitation. So, we have to update our regs to match that because those numbers are different, right? And then, they'll shift over time and it'll kind of keep up with it. So, just not having a static number in there that's been there for 20 years, don't look that sort of thing.
Do your regs currently have that increasing requirement upstream and downstream? Or, is that something you wanna add?
It's in there.
It is in there.
And so, it's just, it's a requirement to evaluate upstream and downstream, culverts and drainage. And so, a lot of the time, we'll be the ones that look at that frankly during technical review and say, oh, there's a 15-inch pipe under Spear Street, and they wanna send all this water that way? That's no good, we have to, we have to talk about that. And then, through modeling, we'll say, oh, you either gotta choke it down more, or maybe we talk about working together to replace this pipe.
And that's, I don't wanna confuse things, but that's in the regulations versus in the public works?
Yes.
The regs, okay.
Those are land development.
Because we, we don't have anything like that, right?
I don't think it's supposed to be like that.
Yeah.
You're, I'm not picturing what you have in your regs. But, you're saying it's a requirement to do calculations. And so, in order for an engineer to report on the results of those calculations, they have to have gone and inventoried the pipes downstream to, to some point. And then, they have to look at what their flow is going to do to that, to that.
It is often that we're the ones as public works employees that know the pipes, that point that out, right? So, they can, and we will give them the information. If they say, hey, I need to evaluate my downstream infrastructure per this section, we're more than happy to, here you go, here's everything we've got. But, majority of the time, we say, oh, wait a minute, they're, they're next to this potential problem.
So, what do you make them do in that situation? Because, you know, that.
They, they either have to go onto somebody else's property to upsize things, and then, where do you end with that? Or, you know, depending on where the, the network, you know, leads to. Or, do, does that kick in certain things that they have to mitigate on site, which is the more usual way?
There's a couple ways, yeah. So, it could be like impact fees, they'll agree to just replace the pipe if it's something not too expensive, right? Okay, it's part of the project, we'll just do that. They may decide that they can do more treatment on site. I can't think of an example where that's happened, but potentially they could say, oh, no, we're gonna infiltrate so much water that we're not gonna increase it. Because there's a different, again, there's a specific standard there for a 25-year storm event, right? So, we know, or through modeling, we can say, this is how much water's coming to this pipe. And so, if it's too much or it's going, you know, getting close.
So, there, it's all kind of unique to the, the property? What sort of deal is cut in terms of what has to be done?
If there's a problems identified, yeah, that, sort of the engineer will get together with the folks and figure out the best thing to do.
Figure out what, what's the, yeah. Well, that's, I think that having that flexibility is important, too, from a, rather than it has to be this way or it has to be this way, you know? So, that, you know, the goal is to, you know, reduce, to make sure this is a little water coming off the site as possible. There's, you know, it's up to you, property owner, how you achieve that.
And so, if you guys are right, I guess that's something else I'll mention. I would not be, I recommend strongly against being prescriptive in what people have to do. So, I think in other town, we were just having a similar discussion once, and somebody really loved porous asphalt. They're like, we're gonna make a porous asphalt everywhere. You know what? Don't tell them they can't, you know, that, that's certainly a potential solution. But, you don't wanna tell everybody they have to put this thing in, which we know we've had problems with in Vermont, right? And so, we were very prescriptive about what the standard is as far as a flow reduction or, you know, pollutant removal or whatever it might be. But, we're not, we don't tell you how to do it. We say, use approved practices, the state of Vermont's approved these practices in their manual, use, use that suite of practices. But, you know, we don't say thou shalt, you know, create rain gardens.
You're prescriptive about the standard that they have to achieve, okay?
The objective is what they, what you're interested in.
And how they get there, whatever they wanna do on their property, you know, just, but you gotta manage stormwater.
So, for minimum pipe sizes, do you recommend doing, say, if you're doing it off a 25-year storm, do it off a 100-year storm instead to plan ahead? Or, is that the cop, maybe that's too big a jump, but?
Yeah, there's a.
Yeah, is there a sort of buffer that you guys build in?
So, at some point, it becomes impractical to make pipes so large and very expensive, too, right?
Right.
So, we've used 25-year, and it'd be something Jeremy can speak to as well. You know, you could say 50-year, but at some point, the pipes get so big and they're so deep and it just doesn't make sense.
And the other thing about 25-year is that, that's, that goes back to, I've seen that standard use in zoning and public work standards across Vermont, going back to where they were brought from B-Trans. And I think that was the, the decision-making process was this is the appropriate amount of cost benefit. You get a fairly large pipe when you're doing 25-year storms. And, but, a 100-year one would be building, you know, you have to pick the road 10 feet taller.
Right.
So, it, it is a very, so you'll see a lot of municipal roads, if you go back and look at the hydraulic calculations that were used to design the road itself, I would say 90% of them are 25-year storms.
And, and there's still standards that say if you wanna get this kind of B-Trans money, you have to have these minimum standards in place. And, and we can share those with you if you guys don't have them adopted already.
That's a standard thing.
Yeah, yeah. And but, I was like, so the 25-year standard, that stays the same. But, again, it's that rainfall, that storm, which is a 25-year storm, that can change. So, maybe it was three and a half inches 30 years ago, but maybe it's four inches now, right? So, that'll be more water, larger culvert, so that.
Okay. When you were doing the form-based code and we wanted to have some stormwater standards in there, Amy McCrelis did a, looked at the infiltration capacity of the land in the, in the district. And it's very interesting. We, there are some places where there's some probably just pockets of sand, you know, that really are very, infiltrate a lot. And that got me starting to think about stormwater infiltration as a kind of potential land use that could be allowed and encouraged and maybe even incentivized. You know, if we had a utility or something like that. Because, you know, we, we're, it's unlikely that there's just, we're not gonna have monolithic end-to-end on Route 7 of development, you know? I mean, we're gonna have it happening in certain pockets, and then, there're gonna be a bunch of properties that are, well, what's gonna become of them, you know? I mean, some of them may, maybe they can be sort of undeveloped. And if they, if, if they are sites that also provide a lot of infiltration naturally, maybe that can be used as, as a kind of land use that we could encourage. It would, would be better looking than what's out there for, for starters. That's one of the goals of the new zoning. But, it also would provide a lot of ecosystem function that, that could be very beneficial. If you think of the Route 7 kind of plateau as, you know, the next step down is, is the lake. So, I mean, we get a lot of bang for our buck. So, so I'm just kind of wondering, Jeremy and Tom, how much you're seeing these days developers looking at site infiltration capacity as an asset? A site asset that, that, that should be leveraged? So, maybe that would inform building on a smaller footprint on those kinds of lots? Because you, it provides the opportunity to just send the water, you know, you can just manage it on site. Are you, are you seeing that?
Not necessarily, I guess, I'll take a quick step back and get to your question. So, the way the state requirements work in this Vermont Stormwater Management Manual we mentioned, they changed it in 2017. So, now, there's 100 ways to treat stormwater out there, right? And the state broke them out into different tiers. And so, tier one is all these infiltration practices, which everybody agrees that's the best way to handle stormwater. Capture it where you generate it, infiltrate it into the ground, that's a tier one practice. A tier two practice is something that maybe doesn't do that, but you still get really good treatment, phosphorus removal, for example, it's like a treatment wetland. That's an example of a tier two practice. And then, a tier three practice would be like your old-fashioned detention pond. So, now, the way this works is that you have to look at those tier one practices first. And you have to prove you can't do it based on some kind of soil characteristics, engineering standards. Okay, you've proven you can't use infiltration because it's clay or groundwater, it's, you know, a foot below the surface or whatever it might be. Then, you can go down to tier two, prove you can't use tier two, then you go to tier three. So, I think to get back to your question, if you could get the stormwater to those areas for infiltration, that would be great. But, that may not be practical in many instances, just, you know, we don't pump stormwater like we do wastewater, right? So, it'd have to be the right situation, so far. And it's not required even in the new regulations, just pumping stormwater. No one's gone that far yet.
I know, admittedly.
And the retrofit is the same. So, on an engineering feasibility analysis for a retrofit under these new 90-50 rules, the first thing they're gonna require us to look at is recharge. So, can you recharge on the site? Are the soils conducive to recharge? Maximize that first, then you go to treatment practice number two. So, the state and the TMDL, the flow restoration plans were all developed to try to encourage recharge where possible as well. But, the practical reality is Vermont, especially Shelburne, it's a lot of clay, you know? We have a lot of deep soils that don't infiltrate very well, so.
Which is why it was so interesting to see that there are these pockets on the linear corridor, which presumably has all sorts of linear, you know, piping of different kinds, not stormwater maybe.
Yeah, and that, I was thinking that as well, though. So, that, so currently, if 90-50 in its current form goes through, then it would be the three acres. And properties that are three acres or more would then have to retrofit, basically, is that what I understood?
Yep.
Okay. And the 2022 would be anything half acre or less would have to be.
So, half acre, when they come in with changes.
Well, okay, only when they come in with changes, right?
Half acre, we're coming to get you, it's half acre until you come in and you add on or create a half acre or more.
So, it's coming in. Well, yeah, but that's less concerning than if it was the, okay, everybody with half acre or more.
Yeah, no, no, that's not, yeah, it's only if there's gonna be additional changes.
Just trying to prepare for the revolution.
That's from, that's with existing, you know, that's, you don't have to come in for anything, they're gonna just tell you. In fact, I think, I believe all, all the property owners that have the three acres have already been notified by the state. It's questionable whether or not all of them were actually notified because some of the expired permits, you know, where they sent those letters, could be somebody that doesn't know what they're talking about. Or, there's nothing there for them to send it to, so.
Right.
Chris, is this residential, commercial, and every, every kind of development?
Everything.
In some cases, it's residential development without homeowner associations, so. In one neighborhood itself.
I was looking at the flow restoration plan, there's a lot of overlap, too.
There is.
So, a lot of the ones that are already on the flow restoration plan that we actually developed for the town are gonna be three-acre sites. So, we're gonna have to figure that out, too, because now the standards have changed.
This might be a test, but to your point, so you have a neighborhood, right? That doesn't have a homeowner's association, who's responsible? Like, who? Who that, that?
That was one of the questions in my comment letter in the state of Vermont.
I'm like.
I think I know.
Retinal, they shall all get along and form what I had to ask anyway.
Right.
I'm too naive, what do you mean?
The town's gonna be asked to pick up the slack and deal with it.
Right.
And to organize, especially towns with utilities and the means to do it, it's not.
So, that was kind of like.
But, at the same time, you know, there's a lot of other responsibilities they've already put on us. So, I'm thinking of one neighborhood in particular where there's, I think, around 70 houses. Each house got a letter, a number of them called. I don't know what we're doing yet, you know? This is new, it's not even passed yet, but we're gonna have to figure it out with you.
Okay, and I'm dumb, so they get a letter, why, are they on more than a half acre?
They're more than three acres together, that, yes.
The, the neighborhood or the, the ones in the neighborhood?
Including the roads.
The neighborhood.
So, that, that application that went in with an expired permit was over three acres.
Gotcha, because the permit goes with the neighborhood.
City owns the roads.
Yep.
So, we're involved in some way. Those roads are regulated two other ways as well under stormwater regs. So, you know, we're gonna have to figure something out.
So, is that like, Chris, so you said the impaired that we have in Shelburne, it was 18 or so projects, only two or three are on town land? So, how do you make the others?
Same thing Tom was talking, it's, it's good, a housing development, but it's town roads.
Yep.
So, when you look at the impervious for that stormwater treatment practice that was put in place back, you know, pre-2002.
Sure, yep.
They didn't look just at the roads, but you also had the impervious area of the, the houses, the driveways on the private property. So, the way that the Shelburne ordinance, stormwater ordinance that we're proposing for the Slack Board to adopt is part of the whole fee structure and everything else that we're looking at, talks about a cost share for something like that, based off of percentage of impervious and stuff. So, for instance, we, we use Deer Run, for instance, that development there, it's town roads, but you got all the, but they do have parts of some of their little cul-de-sacs and stuff are private. So, we would calculate. So we would calculate that out, and if it's a 60% town, 40% private, then we would work with that association to come up with some kind of a plan where we would cost share 60%, and they would do the 40, and so.
Definitely some difficult conversations ahead, but that's.
Part of everything that's going on is figuring out the way that, I mean, everything has to fundamentally change at some point, especially if we want to retain sense of place and all of that, so.
Feel like it's just a burden on the landlord.
Right, good.
But it doesn't affect undeveloped land? Right? We're just asking, somebody who owns.
Three acres of impervious.
Five acres.
Of impervious.
They regulate basically, based on impervious surface.
So if it's undeveloped, it's.
So the public work standards are being revised.
Slowly, yes.
Slowly, and we have this mounting stormwater issue. And I was just thinking, I live in a cul-de-sac neighborhood, that, you know, you practically see the curvature of the earth, right, in the cul-de-sac? I mean, it's 100, over 100 feet. So could we, could we, you know, think about getting rid of that massive central space there and turning that into something that could be used to infiltrate water or hold snow or something like that? I mean, every, you know, fire trucks and school buses can get around, you know, nobody drives in the center of it, so.
Yeah, yeah.
You could.
Yeah.
I will tell you that there's a property or two in South.
It's just over three acres that's saying, wait a minute, can I get rid of some impervious surface and be 2.95? And they'll, you know.
Well, this just seems.
That may be a better idea from them in some way, so.
Yeah, well, this just seems, you know, like this is town infrastructure, and it's town infrastructure that is, you know, definitely contributing to some of the problem, just because it's, you know, it's kind of old-school. So, you know, at some point, those roads will have to be redone. I mean, I live on Yacht Haven, Spinnaker, as does Dawn, right behind you. And, you know, we have curb and gutter, very wide streets, you know, these massive cul-de-sacs, and it's way overbuilt for really what it is. The road is wider than Bay Road, interestingly, and, you know, has about, you know, like one, one hundredth of the daily traffic. So, you know, that's just an example at, you know, the, you know, the curbs getting on about 25-year-old suburb, the curbs are starting to kind of crumble a bit. That's going to have to be redone at some point. I mean, if we could sort of narrow the streets even selectively, I mean, I understand you've got drain inlets at the edges of the roads, you couldn't do it everywhere, but if there could be a way to sort of selectively, you know, unbuild, unpave, and then come out with a little bit of a greener outcome, then maybe we would be putting less stuff into the storm drains. Because we're super sandy where we are, so we, you know, that's an opportunity we could be.
But you're very high groundwater levels.
Are we?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, you're at, you're at lake level.
Yeah.
It's, that was basically a filled-in swamp in a sense.
I guess I'll tell you, from my project experience, that's a hard sell to the neighborhood.
Really?
Oh, yeah.
It's not just a.
Of disturbance, making roads thinner, changing the way, it's always been for that length and disturbing every property along the way, that, I think that would be a difficult discussion involving a lot of neighbors. We've been much more successful finding situations where there's some space where that pipe ends or intercepting it and putting the treatment practice there to treat it. And what you were saying is that certainly not cost, but it's, it's difficult.
I think sometimes it can be cost prohibitive. And then you have, you know, there's more to it than just the stormwater aspect of it, you know, you're looking at, are the, are the roads wide enough for fire truck traffic? What about our snowplows? Can the snowplows still get in there if there's somebody parked on the street? A lot of other things come into it, like with the cul-de-sac issue you brought up. You know, could you do something in the center? You could, but what's the turning radius of what we have for plow equipment to get around that cul-de-sac? And would that in the middle impede on that? So there's a bunch of other things that you have to. And then when you start talking about narrowing up roadways, then you start also talking about, does this mean that now property lines are going to be adjusted? So you're looking at changes in property and easements and deeds and everything else along that way, and.
No, I mean, I, I don't think that you would need to do that.
You'd just maintain that town right-of-way.
Yeah, I mean, because it's still the right-of-way of the town, it's just, it just is being used for, you know, different purposes. So, I mean, I really, I actually, I want to push back a little bit, Chris. I think we need to start thinking about this because we've got an environment that is not only designed entirely around cars and vehicles and gigantic snowplows and ever-gigantic school buses that no one takes, and, you know, really huge fire infrastructure that, you know, this is, this, you know, it's working against, it's creating problems from a stormwater standpoint, but it's also working against, you know, walkability and place-making. So like I'm just saying, you know, check out how wide Bay Road is, and somehow.
I completely agree.
Everything works, we got fire trucks there, we get ambulances, you know, UPS can deliver all that stuff, yet, you know, where in my neighborhood, we have a gigantically overbuilt road. And we're talking about, if you look, you know, we're talking about preserving this into, you know, baking this into the new regulations. If you look on Google Earth and you look at the Juniper Ridge and that whole area up there, all those older, those older roads, those are much narrower, they don't have curb and gutter, the cul-de-sacs are about 60 feet wide, you know? I mean, that's what I'm talking about, maybe going back to. You can see immediately the difference between, you know, at some point in the 80s, the standards just got supersized, and, you know, it's creating stormwater impacts. And this has got to be examined as part of this, you know? I mean, I don't want to just be paying huge amounts of money and, you know, on my taxes, and then we're, we're just building in these impacts because this is completely unquestioned. And people don't want this anymore. They want something that is, you know, more place-based, they want, you know, they want a greener environment to live and work in. And, you know, we're trying to figure out what to do in the rest of the growth area. Does that just become, you know, more yacht haven drives, gigantic curb and gutter, you know, huge cul-de-sacs? Is that what we're looking at? Or, you know, where do we go from here?
I don't know what the width of that development is, and I don't know what the thought process was behind it, if it was meant for parking on both sides of the road.
Chris is a little bit, it's a little bit of messenger.
Right, right, no.
I'm judging those other things.
I appreciate that, but it's, it's a bigger conversation, you know?
Going forward, this is completely in your control. I would assume that those supersized standards of the 80s have been dialed back at this point.
Absolutely.
Because I know, you know, a lot of towns.
Not, not here, they haven't been.
That's why we want to take part in some of those meetings, too.
Yeah.
I mean, but just to stop that from happening, certainly, right? My point, what I started was just to go back and undo a neighborhood and rebuild it, that's a tougher sell, I think, from a stormwater perspective and a stormwater project and a cost-effective perspective than kind of providing the treatment.
Well, right, so there's existing and then there's new.
Yes.
Right, so what you're saying.
Right, but we do, we do have to retrofit these places at some point, you know? I mean, at some point, the cost is going to become so significant, you know, that we're, we are going to need to think about some of this.
Kate, if, you know, someone stepped in and said, these are, after all, public rights at waste. In the case of her neighborhood, these are streets that the town took over.
Yeah.
So it's the town's property, it's the town's asset to manage. So it is within the town's purview to say, we're going to right-size this street and make it narrower and have less impervious.
And less runoff as a result. It's politically going to be difficult to do it, but at least you can make an argument that there's, there's something at stake by right-sizing it and something to be a benefit that would accrue if you were to actually do that. And we do see examples of right-sizing of roads in different places, just not typically in places like Shelburne, but maybe that kind of changes a model for the kind of thing that you're talking about.
And that's what they did on St. Paul.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
But it's a very expensive little, you know, block of street.
But they redid the whole street, too. They had a concept.
So it had very varied stormwater management, and they replaced the gutter only. So it's four feet wide, two feet wide sometimes, and essentially, it's, it's trying to encourage recharge just by doing a strip of pavement, redoing that so that there's a, in appropriate places where they have the ability to receive the water, so water table is an issue. But that is a much more easy retrofit that wouldn't change the width of the street, but would enhance the stormwater management of it, just as an example.
Okay, thanks. Well, that's the kind, I mean, that's the kind of thing, I think, I would like to see more information like that in our, our public work standards, so that that's, you know, it's always on the mind, you know, that we got to manage the water.
And that goes, that goes to Tom, I think Tom was spot-on with, you know, designing stormwater probably as long as times in regulating it. And it does change all the time, and we need as, we need that flexibility, you know, as designers, because new products come out all the time, new, new technical standards come out all the time, so.
I think it would be really not like, we'd ask it, or is that?
Smaller, narrower, I don't know what, what, what the plans are, but I'm sure they want to maximize the number of homes they're building, too.
No, it's, 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 it's going to be the same.
Really?
Yep, the standard is the same. I mean, that's, that's what's really amazing if you look on Google Earth and you look at the older subdivisions. We used to have, we used to have just, you know, less supersized standards. And now, if you look at it, it's, and that's, and that's what we're talking about carrying in to the future. And, and I really think that that needs to be very seriously examined.
And the public work standards, yeah, definitely, open to you. But the public work standards are in process, and we've already made a request to know when the next meetings are, that we can just have some input.
Just getting that, or you just sent something out? I haven't seen.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's something that's coming, because it is important, and that was a very valid point that was brought up, that if we spend all this time in the regs trying to manage stuff and the public works don't, don't mesh with it, then that's, that's its own thing. But also I want to make sure Megan gets her point.
Yeah, I have a quick technical question, as we're talking about all of the, the rain gardens, like a lot of what Kate's saying, those kind of things are what I envision going in place if we were going to do something like that. How big of an impact do they have compared to other stormwater management? Like, is, are they a powerful enough tool that we could be really pushing it to try to reduce our stormwater? Or are they sort of a nice thing to have on, but not a massive impact?
Rain gardens are a type of bioretention area, that's what I was describing to you. So when you build one to treat the rooftop of your home, it's typically called a rain garden. When I build one to treat the street, I call it a bioretention area.
Okay.
Right, and so it's sizing, so.
Yeah.
It's the same engineering design, but just a different scale.
Okay. And are they very effective?
Yeah, they're great ways to treat stormwater runoff. I think that's a tier-two practice.
I was going to say, a tier-one, a tier-two.
But if they infiltrate, you know, it depends with the soil below them if they infiltrate, so.
So enough so that we could sort of push to have those in places as a forward-leaning thing in town?
Again, that's, if you want to say thou shalt build rain garden, I think thou shalt reduce runoff to this. And if they choose to build a rain garden, because they like the look of that, that's great, if they choose to have an underground infiltration area, because.
That works, too.
The site, you know, leave it up to them would be my advice. I mean, you guys could do certainly whatever you want. If you want rain gardens everywhere, you can require, but then, keeping in mind, somebody's got to maintain all those rain gardens.
Exactly.
And those are, you know, somebody's got to run out there and landscape and keep the flowers, also make sure they're inspected and managed for stormwater treatment, not just aesthetics, so.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, really do just keep an eye on the time again. I really appreciate this conversation and your time. And I, as I was saying earlier, I think there are some really difficult conversations to come. At the same time, it's a big opportunity to start talking within the community and friends and neighbors and that sort of thing, just knowing that these things are coming and understanding the reasons why, to avoid what we've seen in the past where people go on about their daily lives, which no judgment whatsoever, that's what we do. But then finding out about a new rule and then freaking out and recognizing there's costs associated with it. I think that it's on us to make sure that word gets out and surprises are minimized.
I think we're fortunate in the fact that stormwater is on a lot of people's minds. I think it's, people are aware of it, and because they're aware of it and they're aware that there's a problem, gives us a perfect opportunity to come to some resolutions. Because it's very difficult when you have a subject that nobody knows anything about, doesn't care about, and then you're trying to do something and you're not getting any buy-in because nobody knows what you're talking about. Right now, it's on the forefront of a lot of people because it's, it's been so active for the last almost a decade now, that it is almost perfect.
Middlebury was fine overall, because upstream from Middlebury, there were really good wetlands. It wasn't part of that town, like, the town had no, town of Middlebury had no control over it, but the towns upstream from them.
Salisbury, Lester, Whiting.
Were much better. So I'm just, this is making me think towns that we should be talking to, working with, trying to come up with a bigger picture plan of stuff that we can't control, we can't put in regs and make owners here necessarily adapt to, but there are ways that we can protect ourselves against the 100-year storm as we're thinking all this out. And that's a big, I don't think we're going to solve that in this, but.
Otter Creek's a little bit different from the La Platte River, given, yeah, it's just different. And so much of the La Platte River, as it passes through Shelburne, the land on either side is conserved, so there's less direct impact, except when it gets to the lake.
Right.
Okay.
But the places you'd be, the places you'd be looking at are, you know, basically Heinsberg. And there are, you know, potentially some wetlands that have converted, but I'm not sure. Then with McCabe, that's a little bit of Charlotte. And that's, a lot of that's agricultural.
Yeah, it's a good point, though.
But that's, that's, that's great sort of thinking that we can apply to the town, which we do, which we do have control over, and our rural areas and our red carrion areas that are right through the growth areas, so.
But also being able to do some outreach to understand what our neighboring towns are doing. That, or, and what we might be doing that could be affecting our neighboring towns as well.
Yeah.
Because it is a bigger issue. But I like the idea of sticking this as a future topic and go through it with the goal of eventually coming up with whatever change we're going to do warrant a hearing and get that ball moving to increase awareness.
I have one other request on this. When it comes back, when, on the next meeting, I would appreciate, and I don't know if this falls into Dean's court or somebody else's court, but a glossary, stormwater terms. Listening to these guys, I'm like, it's cool, I can, I can roll with it, but the, the, the numbers, the acronyms.
Total maximum daily load.
We, we, we can't have this conversation with the public without something educational for us and for the public to be able to, I mean, holy smokes.
It's not like this is solar, I mean, God.
Dakota Ring in your crackerjack. That'd be great. Thank you.
Yeah, that's a good call. Okay, so that will work out getting on to a future topic. And the other thing was, well, and the buffer conversation, so this has been a good.
I was going to ask, where do we go with that?
Yeah, that, that'll have to be a future topic, and we'll just have to get into what are our options. So if we're all okay to move on to capital budget.
Unstraightforward, if you.
Yeah, I was just trying to certainly entertain any comments around that. Maybe to kick it off, the one thing that I would add, and there was a conveniently a bullet left blank. Just to be supportive of initiatives that I know the Select Board is already on, but Just to be supportive of initiatives that I know the select board is already on, but anything that supports economic development. Um, because it sounded like that was in a bit of a gray area, where they wouldn't normally have that in a capital improvement budget, but, um, if that helps sway them in that direction, great.
Support select board initiatives relating to economic development?
Yeah, I think that'd be a great way to phrase it. Um, but otherwise, I, because it's so easy, this has happened the past few years as well, and I, coming from my perspective, it's, it's easy to just slip into looking at all the line items and trying to look at specific projects. And I think from a planning commission perspective, especially with regard to supporting items in the town plan that are listed in here, and we've seen these before as well, uh, is to support the concepts behind them.
Right.
Because when they're negotiating budget and trying to figure stuff out, it's, it's less about specific projects, I think, and more about, hey, this is the spirit of what we're, we're saying we, we support. And I think that's the important thing to convey in this memo.
I took this as a, a preliminary re- review, which is to say, just because their budget's not finalized yet, this is a preliminary review of a preliminary budget, and so at some point down the road, there'll be another review of a final budget for the statute, is that true? Well. Yes, and it is something that doesn't have a definitive timeline. I'm still not clear on how they're, they're gonna be pulling off this parallel review. I mean, it, I think would be instructive to the select board to get a sense. Having done this one, you may feel a little less encumbered when it comes back, I, you know.
I think this is good, I mean, I'm, I'm net positive. Really where I was going with this is, in the first paragraph at the end, you know, now an appropriate time to submit its comments, and I was wondering if we shouldn't say it's preliminary comments, just because sort of, do we get another crack? Once, once, once the budget's finalized, then we're supposed to look at it?
Well, also to keep in mind, this is the SIP, the, it's the capital improvement plan, not the budget itself necessarily.
Yeah, understood.
Um, I mean, they're using that when they're building their budget. What, uh, well, help me out a little bit. I understand completely where you're coming from in terms of not wanting to be blindsided by changes later, but do you have any concept of what might catch us off?
And I don't think anything will, but I'm just, I'm responding to the, the statute says it will review the final CIP, and what we're reviewing is a preliminary CIP, and so it just feels like we should be saying, here's our preliminary comments on your preliminary CIP.
That's.
Not our final comments on the preliminary CIP, I mean, it's just a semantic thing.
So, so one way of looking at it, Neil, is, is that the statute says the planning commission shall be given the opportunity, there's no requirement that the planning commission actually take advantage of that opportunity. So, if, depending on how you word it and how you see it, you could provide this set of comments, and then when you are provided with that final version, very little might have changed, and you might feel no need, and you've already commented.
Agreed, completely agreed.
Or we could decide, once it comes out, to say, all right, well, this was not final, therefore. To say, here are some of our top-tier things. We, we obviously have more things that we're concerned with, that we would want.
Generously fund open space protection, that sounds very open-ended to me. I don't know what an op- I know what an open space is, but what does that imply to fifty thousand dollars for open spaces? I mean, are these signs that say these, you can walk your dog here, or what are we talking about here?
The, the open space, uh. Fund is something that, it was, it's on the ballot and voters can.
Yep.
Really?
Yes, and it's in the CIP for every year at fifty thousand. Last year, because they had some budget crunch things, it got dropped to thirty thousand. So, this is just to reiterate, and the, the natural resources committee is a strong proponent of that as well. So, that, that fund, when it gets contributed, contributed to each year, the fund has a balance, and when there are properties that become available, that might be, um, it might be advantageous for the town to, um, to buy in order to protect, or, um, because it's adjacent to something else that we want to protect, whatever, whatever that is, that's the fund that uses, that we use to, to buy that property, or to go in partnership with, like.
Private.
Lake Champlain.
Shelburne Museum.
Trust, or.
Shelburne Farms.
Yeah, nature conservancy, just any, anywhere where additional funds from the town could help have something be conserved. That, that's what that fund gets used for.
Is there money? How much is, do we know how much money is in that fund, just out of curiosity?
So, so the fund right now has. Dawn, remember, um, it's over a couple hundred thousand dollars.
I thought I remember him saying like two hundred.
Yeah, I was gonna say around two, two fifty, yeah.
Yeah, right. I mean, isn't the word generously in there, because we want them to fund it at fifty thousand and not?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's more, don't cut it, right? Yeah.
My other question is with, again, stormwater management, seems to be the hot topic today, but, um, so I understand most of the stormwater is, you know, it's twofold, one is there's, there's private property. So, this is dealing with the public property, is that what I'm reading into, what's, what's proposed here in the capital improvement plan is? Public property?
So, it's some of those things that they were talking about earlier, when they talked about the flow restoration plan. We have to deal with the, the problems that exist in the Monroe, in Monroe Brook, and the study that Jeremy coincidentally did. His firm looked for places where solutions could be applied, and only two of them are on public property. So, like they were saying, it may be a public-private partnership, because.
So, this is public money?
It's public and private.
But this is public money, not private money?
These, this is, right, these are, this is.
Private money comes from private citizens and private businesses.
Right, but the, the town is on the hook for the flow restoration to be compliant with the state, so the town's responsible for doing that. And if, if the, if the mitigation needs to happen on private property, that's where the public-private comes into play?
The CIP is the town's share, is the public.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
But the investment stormwater management could be like the project that Chris was talking about, where it's maybe sixty percent public, forty percent private.
It, it could be if, if one of those projects, I guess what I think that might be more likely is, is that, because Jeremy didn't size the projects any bigger than they, they needed to be. So, maybe they found a place where they could do a project, and the idea was to just help the town deal with its responsibility.
Right.
That, of all the citizens. Well, maybe it just happens to be located in one of those neighborhoods that's now a three-acre permittee, and they're gonna have a problem, so maybe they'll say, well, we'll work with you and we'll kill two birds.
Right, right.
Yeah, two birds with one stone, and, uh, yeah, shouldn't use that one anymore, but.
But you gotta get the birds.
Yeah, I got two, two bird-stoned, that was what a friend of mine's used to say. Um, something like that. But it may be that the project would be expanded, the town will be paying for its portion, but it will be more cost-effective for the people in the Irwin neighborhood to solve their three-acre problem as part of our solving our flow restoration plan problem.
Yep. Getting back to those difficult conversations where, I mean, a solution's gonna need to be found one way or the other, and it would behoove us to just make sure that everybody's aware of what's going on, so that when we have these discussions, it's coming from a place of, okay, we have a problem, we need to solve it, instead of stop telling us what to do.
No, no, I want to make sure that this isn't, like, these aren't funds that go towards somebody's private property, you know, stormwater mitigation.
Oh, right.
It's a private property issue, right?
Right, because this is only town funds, this is the town money.
Roads.
Yeah, yeah. Any other questions? Yeah, right on.
There's only four points, so.
The, the other piece that I was thinking of, coming out of our conversation from a few weeks ago, was, um, the common bylaw and, and some funds for, to develop a common bylaw. Unified.
Yeah, unified bylaw.
Yeah. Um. And understanding that there's some question about whether the CIP is the right place for that, but there are some other studies within the CIP, and it just seems like if, even if it's not in the CIP, just to let the town know, the select board know, that this is something that's.
Yeah, and I think was that, the idea would be to have, if it were appropriate, to have some kind of a fund that wouldn't be to a specific project necessarily, but it would be to provide matching funds to projects, which I think you include in the budgets now.
It would be something that may be a little bit more ambitious, maybe done over a couple of years. I mean, there's, there's no harm if the group agrees to make it a bullet point.
How, how, um, how much does that normally, would that cost, do you think, a ton, huh?
Good question. I mean, I think it depends on, you know, what kind of approach does the planning commission want to take?
Yeah.
When doing it. Um, there are some good examples out there. You may not need to do, you know, a fifty thousand dollar consultant project. You may spend some time with a couple of really good examples and find that you can work your way through it.
I, I just, whenever I've sat down and thought about what it would take for just this commission to go through that exercise, it always strikes me as being much more involved than the town plan work was, and that was over a year. So, back up again, and maybe for the two of us at the end, the uniform, but what, what is, what is the project? What is the?
Um, so, what, do you want to explain, or?
Well, to create a unified bylaw, although Neil was the one who was suggesting that it be included, so I don't want to steal his thunder.
Uh, there's a subdivision regulation, and there's a zoning regulation, and there's a form-based zoning regulation, and there's three regulations.
Got it, I remember, yes, yes.
And the subdivision regulation is very, very old, and can we put all this together, such as one unified piece? Update all those rules and regulations and make it consistent.
And they'd be all integrated, so that, you know, um, stormwater and sense of, you know, place-making and, uh, walkability, all, all the stuff that we are looking to wrap in would be in, you know, kind of all calibrated per place that we're looking at, right, in ways that it's not now. I mean, there's just a lot of stuff that sort of randomly doesn't seem to apply.
Kind of siloed.
Yeah.